I'm going to call to order Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice is forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Leisure on January 22nd, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Do you want to do special events first?
Yeah.
Yeah. At this time, the Director of Recreation, Lisa Felicia Floyd, will present the special events applications.
And then, let's go to the presentation. Do it, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are five returning applications before you and one wedding application. Are there any questions to any of them?
See you in a moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Felicia. We're now on to items to be presented. We have a presentation by Monmouth County Commissioner, Director Tom Arnone, and County Clerk Christine Hanlon for America's 250th Birthday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome, everybody. How are you?
Good. You?
Hello, everyone. So, I'm Commissioner Director Tom Arnone, and...
I'm here.
And you are?
Christine Hanlon, County Clerk. Thank you for having us tonight. We're really excited to be here to share some information with you.
So, as everybody knows, coming up is in 2026 is 250-year birthday of America. And we, Monmouth County, is doing something a little bit, a little bit special, I think, compared to maybe some of the other counties, which I'm sure will follow suit with what we are. But we have created something, Christine and I, as co-chairs of this committee. And we brought in a few other people with us, but we're obviously steering the whole program. But what's most important is our initiative, getting out to the municipalities to be part of it.
Great, and we are going out to all different towns. We had a summit for municipal officials that everyone was invited to. I think we've hit over 30 towns so far, either at the summit or at a meeting. And one of the most important things we're doing is trying to engage our municipalities in America's semi-quintcentennial in 2026.
And I need Christine to say the words semi-quintcentennial, because I mess it up.
I practice it a lot. It's really hard to say. Ted, are we doing the video, or are we going to do that in a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, so for those of you who don't know, America, the federal government started the planning for America's 250th Birthday a long time ago. And they started in 2016. And I think because of the COVID-19 pandemic, everything got real quiet for a couple of years. But now, the federal government is really activating their plans and initiatives to celebrate America's 250th Birthday. And the America 250 Committee is sort of the federal structure that is planning all the events for the whole country. And interestingly enough, I like to point that out, the America 250 was designed by the same artist that did the bicentennial slogan back 50 years ago. So they brought that artist back to create the slogan for America, you know, that planning. And the Chair of that committee is the former Treasurer of the United States, Rosie Rios. And her vision for the committee is to really honor our past, have an inclusive celebration, and really celebrate the contributions of people who have, you know, made our country great. And then, of course, every state in the country is putting together their programming for this big birthday celebration that's coming up. And do you want to talk about it?
So then, what we wanted to do here in Monmouth County, we thought it was very important because of how we are, the diversity that we have here throughout Monmouth County, and the different demographics of the county, which is, which is very, very broad there. And that if we did something special to every municipality, did what best fit every municipality, and we, and we promoted throughout all of the county, I think it would be very unique compared to what other counties are going to do. In particular, so I'll use Asbury Park as an example. So what Asbury Park is going to do, whatever you choose to do, hopefully you choose to be part of this, is going to be much different than, say, a Millstone or an Upper Freehold or something like that. And it's just the way we live around here, like I live around here. We're, we like the congestion and all the hustle-bustle and all that. That's important to us for our business climate. But when you get in your car, you drive out to Upper Freehold or Millstone, they want none of that. They just like, stay away from here. You know, they want horses, open space, and land. But that's what makes us so unique there. So we wanted to take that and, you know, piggyback on it and make something even more special. So Christine, myself, we appointed an ad hoc committee, obviously all supported by the rest of the commissioners, and we funded it. And what we first had to do was start out with an executive director, and Christine and I interviewed, and we have Ted here, and that's Ted Matora here, who's doing a fine job. So he'll be the filter point of where all the information goes and gets dispersed from.
So every county is being encouraged to do their own programming. And, you know, New Jersey has this overarching commission where they're handling things for New Jersey. And so we started to begin our planning, and I think we're ready for our video.
Yep, go.
The 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States of America is coming in 2026. America's semi-quintcentennial will be celebrated all across our nation, our state, our county, and our communities.
In Monmouth County, we celebrate not only the birth of the greatest nation in the world, but the significant role our county has played in the fight for independence.
New Jersey is known as the crossroads of the American Revolution, and Monmouth County has a rich history integral to the fight for our nation's independence. The Battle of Monmouth was pivotal in the American Revolution. It was the biggest and longest one-day battle of the Revolutionary War, with General George Washington leading the Continental Army in the attack on the British. But Monmouth County's Revolutionary War story is much more than that.
It's the stories of families and loyalties divided and individuals from different backgrounds attempting to navigate uncertain times. It's the story of the strife and skirmish over many years of the revolution that pitted neighbors against neighbors, friends against friends. Those loyal to the Crown organizing for and its freedom for the column of war in any other county in New Jersey.
At the time, Governor William Livingston called Monmouth "the theater of spoil and destruction." Monmouth County was truly a battleground in the cause of freedom. And when the war had been won, the people of Monmouth County gradually transitioned over to the peaceful pursuits of agriculture, commerce, and industry.
In the almost 250 years since the signing of the Declaration of Independence, Monmouth County has grown and flourished to be the ideal place to live, work, and play. Monmouth County has everything: the most expansive parks and open space, our breathtaking shoreline, our beautiful towns and bustling cities, fertile acres of cultivated farming, innovative industry and business.
Our county has grown to be the fifth most populous in the state with over 600,000 residents. I truly believe it's the best county in the state of New Jersey. And our people have made their mark on our national landscape: accomplished entertainers, poets, and writers, innovative inventors, government leaders, renowned judges, famous athletes, war heroes, entrepreneurs, activists, and so many more. 2026 may seem like a long way off, but we are excited to embark on the journey toward this momentous event.
Join us as we look back on the people, places, and events that have carved the Monmouth County system over the past 250 years, and as we plan our celebrations of the birth of the greatest nation on earth. 250 is coming, and Monmouth County will be round. So that's a brief, like, introduction of what, what we're trying to achieve there. But, you know, and I say this over and over again, and I said this when I came on 15 years ago onto the board, that the county's only as good as the 53 municipalities that are part of it. And, you know, the county is the municipalities there. So that's what we work, and as you know, working with each and every one of you on a daily basis there, that's what we're trying to achieve this. And to go a little bit back into, as we remember the bicentennial, where, you know, in 1976, I could personally remember being here, you know, because this is the area that I live in, being here and seeing, you know, even my hometown, Neptune City, a parade, and they had a fireman's fair, all celebrating that. But that's what was good for Neptune City at that time. And what was good for Asbury Park at that time, you know, and what you choose to do there is good for you guys. But something in all the municipalities, I think, would be really special if we then spread the word out to all of them.
One of the things we did when we embarked on this project was to investigate what happened during the bicentennial. And thankfully, as the county clerk, I oversee the county archives, and we have boxes and boxes of records of what happened in Monmouth County and in the state of New Jersey during the bicentennial. And we were able to pull a few things from Asbury Park that we could show you. I think there was the Freedom Train that was going all through the state and stopped at Asbury Park. There's like a little flyer on the left-hand side. There was a three-day bicentennial exposition, Monmouth County's history, under one roof at Convention Hall. Asbury Park had a bicentennial float in the parade in Freehold Bar. It was like a county-sponsored parade. And there was a flag day, a bicentennial program at the American Legion home. And we have records of what every town did that was special for their town. And by looking at these records from 50 years ago, it has been able to guide us in our planning and kind of move forward with sort of what are the things that we want to replicate, what are the things that we want to make better or different, but we had a really good foundation going forward. One of the flashbacks we'd like to do, we go to town meetings, is the Operation Sail flashback, because this is something that was part of Monmouth County in 1976. For those of us who remember, who were around, I can't speak for everybody, I don't know how old everybody is, but all the tall ships came to Sandy Hook. They made a stop in Sandy Hook as they went south to Baltimore. And we already got confirmation that they will be coming again. It's called Sail 4th, Sail 4th 250, and they will be stopping in Sandy Hook again on July 2nd. So July 3rd, okay, July 3rd. And on the fourth, they're going to head down, I think, to Baltimore and then to Virginia.
So what we also, and sometimes things just fall, you know, in your lap to be considered luck. And so our planning now is from now until, obviously, 2026. And certain things that have come up, fortunately enough, from Monmouth County, that we can actually showcase as, you know, it wasn't made for that, but we can say it was utilized. And so, I don't know if anybody's familiar, but when a Navy vessel is commissioned, it is a very, very big thing, very, very big thing. And it came down to two counties, that SS New Jersey, right?
USSS New Jersey.
USSS New Jersey. And it came down to two counties, Camden County and Monmouth County. We fought, yeah, I fought very hard along with there to try to get it here, knowing that I thought it would, you know, there was a lot for the sailors to do, for everything to do. And fortunately, we won. We won that bid, and September 14th, it is going to be commissioned here on Earl there or somewhere out there. We don't know the exact location where it's coming in at, but it's going to be commissioned there. But it's part of our long-term plan to celebrations, for celebrations that we plan on doing.
Okay, so as a county, we have come up with vision and strategy of what we would like to see in Monmouth County. And importantly, we want to make memorable celebrations and experiences that residents and visitors will talk about for years to come, just like 50 years ago. People remembered, people celebrated, and they, you know, it stayed with them for several years. We want to honor and commemorate our history here in Monmouth County and our significance of the American Revolution, but not just that, our history over many, many years, and why Monmouth County is so important in the history of our country. We want to generate awareness and excitement for residents and visitors through our public information and marketing campaigns, and we want to collaborate with our municipal governments, our schools, the arts community, business organizations, and historical groups, and anybody else that wants to participate.
And big component, as like Christine said, is our schools. So our main focus is going, is one of our focuses, I should say, is going to be going to the, to the schools and educating them. So 50 years from now, when the 300-year anniversary comes, they can pretty much take the part. And what we did, I, a while back, and you'll, you'll know the name very well, I have a good friend here, Dan Diceno, as everybody knows here, his son, I found out, was graduating from Georgia University as a graphic artist. And fortunately enough, we, at that time, we had one, but we needed another one, and I hired him. Well, amazingly enough, he's unbelievably phenomenal, I mean, like freehand phenomenal. And this is his fourth coloring book that he's done for us, and all totally freehand there. And so our goal is to get this out to the students there. And I see we have some here, I want to make sure that all of them, yeah, when they leave here, there, and get that out to them. So that they, and, you know, go speak to them and let them know that, you know, this is as important for them, for the history, as it was for us in 1976, for, to be today.
And another thing that we're doing, a big part of what we're doing, is engaging with our historical organizations from all around the county. We had a Friday meeting with Kay Harris, you know, Asbury Park Historical Society, because we want to make sure that, you know, every, every person, everyone who's involved with Monmouth County's history can play a role. And we're trying to encourage people, you know, we know that we can't do everything. We want people in each of the municipalities to be creating and promoting whatever it is that they want to do. And that's really important to us. So we have been meeting with all our historical organizations. We've already had two big meetings, a few private meetings, and, and that's been going really well. Everyone seems to be very excited. So on the county level, we created a logo that we'd like to share with all of our municipalities. We created a slogan of "Freedom's Battleground" because of all of the fighting that took place here during the Revolutionary War. We did our website, we hired Ted, we have our social media channels going, we have our email newsletters up and running. And then we decided to do our repurposed emergency vehicle that is now our 250 truck that is going to parades, fairs, festivals, to educate people about what's coming and get people engaged and just sort of get the awareness going around the county. And we have...
A video for that? Yes.
Sure. As we approach the 250th anniversary of America, Monmouth County is going to be a big part of that celebration. We were a big part of the Revolutionary War, and we certainly are going to be a big part in celebrating the 250th anniversary of America. Behind me here, we are looking at our repurposed communication vehicle. This truck will be at all fairs, festivals, parades, any special locations that we have. Generate enthusiasm, generate an education. I think this will bring to light not just Monmouth County, but across the state of New Jersey, how important our role was in the Revolutionary War. And we expect it to be quite a celebration here, as Monmouth County played such a large role in the history of our country.
So the counties, basically, we've invested, and we plan on investing, my fellow commissioners and myself, we sat down during budget time and invested funds for this, because we know the importance of coming together, bonding the whole of the communities there. From hiring Ted to some other events that we're about to embark on, and then helping the municipalities, being able to, you know, showcase what they have, once they decide what they have. And then going out and getting grants, and I know we're applying for a grant.
Yes, so I wanted to let, I always let the municipalities know that there are grants available from the state for things relating to the semi-quintcentennial. There are also grants from the federal government, and some of the special grants that the state of New Jersey has is about telling stories that maybe have not been told. So we've applied for a grant to showcase the history of black soldiers during the American Revolutionary War, I'm sorry, during the Battle of Monmouth, because we have not seen anything in video format relating to that information. But we like to tell all the municipalities, because the state is very big on giving grants for stories that haven't really been told. So I encourage everybody to apply for these grants if you have something that you want to do, and we tell our historical organizations to do that as well, because it's a really great resource. Some of the things that we're also doing as a county, in terms of videos that we talked about, we're doing these like Talking 250 videos, where we showcase something important about Monmouth County's history, or some of the videos that you saw already. We are working on our educational programs. We really see this as very important to tourism and economic development. We see this as an integrated program where we attract visitors and tourists to our county to enjoy all that we have to offer. We're also working on some one-time events, like parade, fireworks, a gala, a county-wide gala, and some contests, some concerts, and a lot of different things that county-wide we have in the works.
So just piggybacking a little bit on what Christine said, so the gala, we're envisioning, Christine, myself, are working on a venue now, to pick a venue there. And our ultimate goal is to, it to be just like gigantic, a gigantic gala with representation from the, like a table, let's say, a table that's, you know, decorated with the sign of Asbury Park, and hopefully have big participation of Asbury Park there, Bradley, Belmar, all 53 towns to be represented at this big gala there, which would be pretty cool. And making, you know, just like a real special event for all of the county. And then, as Christine said, you know, some of the other little things, you know, our, our parade that we plan on having in the county, obviously, you know, piggybacking on whatever the municipalities have, you know, gigantic fireworks presentation. And then, we plan on talking about maybe a monument statue at a certain location that's essentially located there. So all those things are things that we're working on, you know, behind the scenes.
So we like to ask that municipality do certain things, every municipality we go to, is to adopt a resolution supporting, you know, the 250th anniversary of the United States of America. We ask our municipalities to try to form a committee to think about and plan what you might like to do within your municipality. We'd love to have a liaison from the municipality to our committee, and encourage everybody to participate in whatever way they can, and then keep us updated, follow our, our social media, keep us updated with what you might be planning to do. Some municipalities ask us for ideas of what they can do. We just kind of developed a little list of things, you know, working with local businesses and organizations to commemorate in unique ways. Embrace the arts community with special projects. Create your own communications and marketing plan. Do oral histories of people, notable people in, in your municipality. Mark in your historic properties, do community cleanup. There's a big sort of America's Beautiful program coming down from the federal government, which is kind of a repeat of what they did during the bicentennial, to have like community cleanup programs. And then, planning events or applying a 250 to events that you want to do.
Which is going to be really, it's going to be much easier for Asbury Park to do than probably any of the other municipalities' notable, you know, celebrities there. Probably, you know, I actually was thinking about it before, probably the most have come out of Asbury Park, out of any individual, you know, municipality there. So it'd be pretty cool to add that to some sort of component to whatever you might do.
And that's the end of our show.
That's the end of our show. And just want you guys to be part, and listen, and I'm going to be totally frank, and we've been to a lot of municipalities. We were just at Little Silver this, two nights ago, and we're out there, but truth of the matter is, history-wise, you know, we're in the town, and that's probably the most history in, in the whole county. So, you know, having Asbury Park be part of it, and their history would be, you know, pretty special to the county.
I have a question. So I've got a bunch of pictures from the 50 years ago. But you also said that you have some archives about what Asbury Park did. I'm wondering if we could get copies of any photos or articles that you have, so in order to do an exhibit, it would just enhance it.
Yeah, we'll get you whatever we have. So we put a few pictures up here, you may have those as well.
I have some. My father was actually on the float. My father was George Washington.
No, wait, you're kidding.
Yes. Which is why I have a bunch of pictures.
Yes, yes. So we're trying to do like little exhibits from the bicentennial too, and we're also willing to collect people's photographs.
So I'll make you copies of Belmar.
That would be amazing, because these would be great to have in the archives. You know, just doesn't have to be, it just could be a neighborhood who's celebrating, you know, and anything we would take to preserve as part of, as part of our history. Great. All right, well, thanks for having us.
Yeah, great, thank you. And we just would ask, like, because we, we're trying to get, send out the message to all, if we could just grab, if you guys stay right there, if we could have there...
Might as well take a photo.
A photo for the county, if we're posting on all of our...
Totally.
Those, okay, gotcha.
And we'll give...
I'll give those out while you're taking photos.
Yep.
I got it.
To the kids and adults.
Yeah, do you want to come here and stand down there?
No, no, we're there.
Okay. All right. Come on in.
Awesome. Yeah.
Yeah, don't block her face. It's upside down.
Are you upside down? You're up there.
Upside down.
Upside down. Okay.
Yeah, we're on cover, we're on cover of this.
Yeah, I know. I want to create a barrier as well.
Okay.
Did you get everyone?
We're going to do this three times, if that's okay, all right? One, two, three. All right, two more. One, two, three, and one more. Three, two, one. Thank you, guys.
Great job. Thank you. Sorry, we're long, but we had to stick to it.
George, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Two days in a row.
Two days in a row. Thank you so much.
See you later.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Thanks.
So your daddy's on the float with George Washington?
So I have a bunch of pictures up there.
Oh, funny.
reads all over the state.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Oh, yes. First of all, good evening, everyone. And I want to take this time to wish all of the ladies a Happy Mother's Day this weekend. If you're not a mom, it's okay, because I know that you have allowed someone to lean on your shoulder, you've dried some eyes, or you've mentored or given some advice. So make sure that you go out, treat yourself real nice, and that special someone, make sure that they do everything for you this weekend. Enjoy. The other thing that I would like to say to you is that the Women's Empowerment Mentoring Program will not meet this Saturday, excuse me, on the 18th. We will be meeting here on the 25th from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. Again, Happy Mother's Day. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Nothing, Mr....
Mayor Moore?
Yeah, thank you.
Matters from the City Manager.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Matters from the City Attorney.
Yes, I do have another announcement this evening concerning the proposed redevelopment project planned for 1201 Memorial Drive. There is a public hearing and the potential for the adoption of a redevelopment plan that is listed on tonight's agenda, its ordinance 2024-11. These actions were tabled at the last council meeting until tonight. In the meantime, and in response to the concerns raised by nearby residents, the council is now entertaining the consideration of adding a second entrance and exit to the proposed development off of Fifth Avenue, so that there would be access and egress offered from both Fourth and Fifth, and not just Fourth. The council is having staff and professionals look into this proposal and to engage in discussions with the developer about it to determine if this proposal is feasible. As such, the council intends to table the public hearing and the second reading on ordinance 2024-11 once again tonight until the next meeting, which will be on May 22nd. If, in the meantime, it is determined that this new proposal is feasible, then council will withdraw ordinance 2024-11 at the next council meeting and will start the process over again by referring the revised redevelopment plan to the Planning Board for its review at the May 22 meeting. Given this course of action, there will be no public hearing on ordinance 2024-11 tonight, but the public is certainly welcome to provide its feedback on this new proposal during the regular public comment period tonight. And that's it.
Thank you. We're now onto public participation. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address for the record.
Beat you. Hello, my name is Nancy Sabino. I live at 1004th Avenue. What I'm about to say is well-known to the council, so I'll address my comments to the city manager, who is new. Last week, the city had our very first warm sunny Friday. Middle of the day, there were people on the beach, people on the boardwalk, as if it was July. Us casual walkers found it unusually crowded, with walkers, joggers, wheelchairs, strollers, and bicycles. Reading the signs hung on the railings facing the beach and painted on the ground at the entrance points, it's clear that no bicycles are allowed between 10:00 a.m. and midnight on the boardwalk year-round. As I let the cyclists know as they whizzed by me, I was asked, "Who do you think you are?" And I was told where to go and that I was just playing wrong. My walking partner and witness to what I'm saying, and I saw a police officer, so we approached him and asked him what could be done. He said, "Oh, I think that doesn't take effect until May 16th." I said, "Let's go look at the sign." He looked, he read it, and he said, "I think that means the same time as when the dog ban takes effect." I said, "I didn't think so," and said, "We'd go read the ordinance," hoping the police officer would do the same. It seems no one knows that bikes are never allowed on the boardwalk during the day. To quote a famous line from Cool Hand Luke, "I think what we have here is a failure to communicate." I recommend that the city manager, on the next warm weather day, invite the chief of police and take a walk on the wild side. Pick any stretch of the boardwalk you like and see if you think that the ordinance is being followed. If not, what will it take to change this? Sandwich boards we used to have? Specials? Mobile electronic signs? At the very least, can the police be aware of the ordinance that's already on the books? Welcome to the city of Asbury Park and its quirks. As I was writing this between 7:30 and 8:30 a.m. in my kitchen on 4th Avenue, 12, count them, 12 dump trucks, both full and empty, barreled up and down the street. A street where the sign says, "No trucks over four tons are allowed." And they were speeding as well over the 25 mile an hour speed limit. I would like to know to whom I should talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nancy, just so you know, we had a beach operations meeting just this week, and there was also a coffee with the council person gathering this week, and there was a lot of talk about bicycles on the boardwalk. Sonia Spina, our Director of Communications, is looking to make some significant changes in the signage and, and how it reads to make it more clear. And our city manager will be meeting with our police department to make sure that these are all enforced. These are meetings that we've just had in the last few days.
Great, that's wonderful. Thank you. Well, also look into the, you can contact me, actually, to speak about the dump trucks.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Coach Will, Will Wright, 426th Avenue, Asbury Park. First of all, thank you for having me. Appreciate the fact that we're able to come here. I'm here on behalf of the Asbury Park Little League. This year, we are asking, we're not here begging, we're not here complaining, we're just here asking for support. This year, with our kids, we have quite a few events planned this year. And I think we haven't received anything from the city in the past three or four years. But I just want to read over my, our schedule for this year. And we all love this city, all the kids, we represent it, we, everything that we do in our program is respect for our city, and we represent it when we go out of town. So that's why we're here today, we're just asking for the city's support. This year, on May 25th, Memorial Day, all of our kids will be out placing flags at Memorial Park on the cemeteries, which we do every year. On June 15th, we're having a banquet at my church, which we have to purchase 140 trophies, also food, and decoration. You guys are welcome to come again this year. I invited some folks there last year. On June 29th, we have a picnic at the Blue Claw Stadium. We take all the kids there, which costs about $2,200. On July 9th, we are taking the kids to the Nickelodeon trip, which is two buses. These buses, both buses cost $3,800, plus $1,500 for food, for tickets, rather. On July 20th, we're taking the kids to Cape May Zoo, two buses, which was total of $4,300 and approximately $2,000 for food. In August, we have some, the city folks went to a game with us last year, we are going to the Yankees game, that's two buses, which cost about $4,200 as well. And in August, we plan to have our kids go to Monmouth University for camp, which is about $1,200. So we're here just asking the city to, if you can support us, we really want to do what we can for our children. Brought some of the kids here, kids, stand up here, please. And also, this year, we was able to have 12 teams, which we normally don't, only get about seven teams, and we have three, three girls team this year. One is sponsored by Community Karma, one is sponsored by the Mercy Center, and also one is sponsored by City by the Sea. So we added quite a few kids onto our roster this year, plus the fact that we don't pay registration. We raise all our money either on the street with cans or we're sending out letters to the donors. And we do appreciate all the donors who support our organization. And I think we have one of the finest organizations in New Jersey, because nobody, no other team, nowhere does it but what we do for our children. We try to keep them off the street during the summer. That's why we have all these added activities for them. And also the coaches, everyone spend all their time getting away from their own family, coming out there, supporting our kids, our community, our neighborhood. So just asking you if you would consider. And I brought my secretary, if you want to write us a $10,000 check today. And also brought the transfer here so he can deposit in the bank if you were so kind. Thank you very kindly. God bless, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
My property borders 1201 Memorial. I have stated before that I am happy this building is going up. I'm really looking forward to having the property developed. I'm confused by the fact that you had done these traffic studies and you decided Fourth Avenue was the best option for this building. We got a group together, we were, all wanted to do Memorial, that's out of the question. But now that you're considering other options, so I'm wondering, do the traffic studies that told you and directed you to Fourth Avenue, now are those traffic studies changing? Do we have new traffic studies? Are the traffic studies studied having both exits? Where's the information? That's number one. And number two, the property there has recently had an oil leak, and we somehow, no one's been talking about that. How is the oil leak affecting what is going to be built or when it's going to be built, more likely, when? What's gonna happen with the oil leak? What are the repercussions to the builder for leaving this oil tank on the property and it leaking into the lake? Do you lake for years, probably, because the building went down three years ago, Burke took it down and somehow didn't do a sweep for the oil tank? So what is happening with the, this oil problem and how it, how are they, are they being fined or the, what's the process now with that? Thank you.
Thank you. You want to talk about that? Do you want me to talk about that? So with respect to the oil leak, the owner of the property is working with Monmouth County LSRP, and also our city engineer is involved, and they are working on it. Is, we just had a conversation the other day about it. That's the most I have.
Well, that's, you're solving the, hopefully eradicating the problem, but that doesn't change that it has been leaking into the lake. Who's responsible for that? What are they doing about it? Do they get fined? Is there a cleanup that happens on the property and then further along? Like what's?
That's all that I have right now to tell you, is that they are working with Monmouth County LSRP, the city engineer is involved, as well as the homeowner and they, the property owner, and they are doing what they need to do to remediate the property. I know they put out bags at one point to stop it from flowing into the lake, but I am sure there will be some remediation involved in it.
Okay, let me give you a couple bullet points. And it's a summary. So the storm drains adjacent to the northeast corner of the site are protected with silk bags since March 20th, 2024. The silk bags will remain in place pending UST removal.
I've seen them, I clean the garbage out of them because the property owners don't pick up garbage, and they just cut the grass for the first time today, by the way, which was above my knees.
Well, that's something Coach should look into, I agree with you. Silk heads, hay bales, and absorbent booms have been deployed around the northeast corner of the site since March 22nd, 2024, and will remain in place pending UST removal. Contents of the 25-gallon UST were removed via vacuum truck on March 27th, 24th for off-site disposal. Strained soil was excavated on March 27th, 2024 in the grass area located between the sidewalk and Fifth Avenue and the area backfilled with certified clean stone, and additional absorbent booms deployed in the area. This area was also inspected on May 6th, 2024, and no additional staining or impact were observed in this area. This is from Peter Sturridge, who is the LSRP from National Practice Leader. We can get you a copy of this if you wanted, and it has some more details, but that's basically breaking down to where we are at this point in time. So they did discover an underground storage tank with 25,000 gallons in it. They pumped it out, they're saying they checked it, there's been those indications of leaks since March, and we're waiting for the underground storage tanks to be removed.
And the DEP has been notified, has been involved with this as well.
Right, if anybody's gonna be giving out any fines, it'll become from DEP, I would imagine.
So you don't know if it's gonna delay the building of this new property?
I seriously do not think so, because right now, like, we're still like, you know, we're delaying tonight's vote and we're not doing the second reading because we are looking into the feasibility of an entrance and exit on Fourth and Fifth. Because neighbors recommended that to be done, so.
Well, we also recommended Memorial, but you didn't consider that.
Correct.
We did consider that, we did consider that.
No, you said you agreed and disagreed.
And our professionals gave us an opinion on that. Don't say we didn't consider that, that's not true, David. We did, and our professionals gave us an opinion on it, and they don't think it's safe.
Who's the professionals?
Beth. Beth and James, feel free to reiterate your opinion on why you don't think Memorial's a good idea. And we have a memo on it, that's not right to say.
But if you have a study that said Fourth is the best, that should be the answer. Not that I'm, no offense to Mike, if, if that was the decision, but now you say, "Oh, but we could do it another way." That doesn't make any sense, because our studies proved that Fourth was the best. So if you have a study that was done and you decided Fourth was the best, but now there's another option, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, and you're entitled to your opinion, I'm sorry, your time's up, but yes, we're looking into a suggestion brought by residents. I think we'd be wrong not to look into all options on this at this point in time, and I don't think that's gonna slow down the project either. But thank you.
Hi, Rita Marano. Asbury Together, they had their kickoff at the art gallery. I was just wondering, isn't that a conflict to have that, a kickoff for their reelection in an art gallery that we give money to? We got two lawyers up there, it's either a yes or no answer, I want to hear.
Well, okay, finish your comments, or you're gonna want to answer.
Okay. The other thing about, how did that become a redevelopment of Fourth and Fifth Avenue? I was reading the ordinance on it. You decided that that was where you wanted to put a piece of property, and a residential one at that, when it was zoned for commercial. So it's all up to you, the way you decide to do things, because that's the way the ordinance reads. But that's not a good decision. You should have had a real massive meeting and invited everybody from within 200 feet and more. I know you have to invite people from 200 feet, but you should have had those two neighborhoods. Because in the ordinance, it said that's a mixed neighborhood. What does that mean? As far as I know, you go up Fourth, as soon as you pass that building, it becomes totally residential, all the way down to Locust. And if you go down Fifth Avenue, it also becomes, see if the Memorial Drive, it becomes all residential. So how is it a mixed use? What makes it a mixed use? There's no stores in between, there's no nothing. And if there is a restaurant on Sunset, that's been, I guess, grandfathered in. But I really want to know about the ordinance, about conflict of interest with the three girls up there, because they're gonna be voting on a lot of artwork that's gonna happen in the city. But meanwhile, they have their kickoff in the art studio. Now, is that a conflict or isn't it? They vote on their money, I see it in the bill resolution. So I don't know what the grant is, or if they have a grant, or has that become part of our city? I don't know, because everything is a big mystery. So I'd like an answer on conflict of interest with those three women.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Beth, you want to come up and explain how it became a redevelopment area and why it's a mixed use?
The property was an existing area in need of redevelopment when the property owner came to the city council to propose a project and share ideas about how the site might be redeveloped with a mixed-use building composed of predominantly residential units with first-floor parking as well as commercial uses. And so the council considered that, the developer's proposal, they worked with my office to, as well as the developer, on what that plan might look like, and also did a public information meeting to solicit public comments about how the, the site might be developed in order to, to determine public input and also to further shape the project prior to the redevelopment plan being prepared.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. As far as, I'm not the lawyer, but I'm gonna say, I don't think it's a conflict of interest. We'll have the lawyer look into it, but again, I don't remember any bill resolution where this gallery was given money, so.
Well, John, in all due respects, you're not a lawyer.
I said that.
I know artists are being provided with funding who are doing murals within the city, but I'm not aware of funding that the council is voting on for a specific art gallery. I mean, I would need more information. Conflicts are very fact-sensitive. So if you can provide me more information, I'd be happy to look into this and render an opinion.
So the lawyer just said the same exact thing I said, but I'm not the lawyer. I agree with this. Again, Rita, you can call me. I can't remember like ever giving money to that art gallery. So you can say John's wrong. Eight years ago, you gave him $200.
We know about the word. I mean, like, you know, you had it at the word when you ran.
Correct.
But now they're having it in a place that we do business with. That's a conflict.
When do we do business with them?
We pay for their artwork. Did you forget the $10,000 mural on the building?
I think maybe she's getting confused that the Public Art Commission?
That we pay for, and that's the woman that owns the gallery or operates it.
Jen Hampton is on the Public Art Commission, along with nine other members. The city gives the Public Art Commission. I'm trying to answer your question, Rita. The city?
What?
The city gives the Public Art Commission somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 a year to do murals. You see them on the sewer plant. We have one going up right now on Asbury Tower. That is money to the Public Art Commission, not to Parlor Gallery.
But she runs it.
She's on the Public Art Commission, yes, along with nine other members, including Michael Roll Control.
I remember her with the microphone. She was the one that announced it and she's part of it and you're in her gallery.
I am, yes.
Well, that is a conflict.
Yep. Okay. Well, like I say, if you have any more information, you can give us, we'll investigate it.
I think you should work on it.
Okay. Thank you, Rita.
Kevin Strickland, 1109 Second Avenue. And first, I just want to express my appreciation for all the support the board has given Little League over the years and acknowledge that Will is doing such a great job in building this program. And something significant happened this year, is we developed a girls' softball program. So I think Will may have left that out, but I think that's significant expansion to the Little League program. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
You're absolutely right. Are you the coach of the Tigers?
[laughing] That's real bad skill.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Carrie Martin, Second Avenue. I just want to also reiterate my support for Esberry Park Little League. Nellie, my daughter, is on her fourth season of Esberry Park Little League now and is in the girls' softball, the Tigers team. The dedication that Coach, it almost makes me teary, that Coach Kevin gives these girls is so amazing. And just even to, and Coach Will and all the other coaches. You know, Nellie does a lot of the recreation programs in the city that Lisa organizes swim and summer rec. But Esberry Park Little League being a year-round program, the number of kids that they support too and then the trips they take them on. I'm just, for example, last night out on the Esberry Park, you know, Esberry Park Stadium fields out there, like a beautiful summer night, there's so many different games going on, there's so many families showing up. It's just such, I would call it the Esberry Park Little League lifestyle too. It's not like Nellie is like, was begging to be a baseball player, but it's such this like loving, fun environment. So I hope, I was at the Rock and Roll for Recreation Mayor Moore and I hope, seemed very successful, so I'm hoping you have a $10,000 check. Is that what you want, Coach Will? For Esberry Park Little League, because it is really a wonderful, wonderful organization for the kids and like I said, it is teaching them sport, but it's also creating such a wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you, and I totally agree with you. To be there on opening day was a pleasure, so thank you.
Hi, Celia Kitane, I'm in 1501 Ocean Ave and I'm here with Little League. I'm actually recently on the board as secretary, so I'm learning a lot about baseball and softball because I had no subject matter expertise prior to this, but learned a lot from Will and also Community Karma, we are sponsored by one of the softball teams, as Will mentioned, which is exciting. But just, the program that Will's built and all of the coaches and past boards is amazing. Just seeing and interacting with the kids, the parents, every single game that, you know, I've been to all the Diamond Girls games, all of the parents always come. When we go to away games, they always come. So just like how welcome families and kids feel and how much fun it is to participate, it's really, it's impressive. And actually, last year, last night, we had our first home game. We played Point Pleasant. We won! And Point Pleasant, like, they said, they had so much fun coming to Asbury. They were like, one of the grandmas that was there watching, she's like, we're coming back next week. We're not playing you, but we're just coming back next week because we felt so welcome on this field and just, it's amazing. So yes, I will happily take a check for a Little League today or whatever you can do to support. We love working with Lisa and Cassandra and the rec programs because they're amazing and everything that you do is amazing and have the ball that, you know, just, we want to see the program grow because we grew 12 teams and I think we're gonna have more teams next year. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you were covering it, Kevin.
All right. Carrie Butch, 501, no, 500, Dill Lake Drive. On the Esberry Park electronic sign today, I stopped and I actually pulled my car over and took a picture of that. It says, please be aware that many street drugs have been tainted with additives such as fentanyl, and I can't pronounce that other word. It looks like xylene, which are causing an increased danger to users. I guess my question to you guys is that, have there been incidents in Esberry Park where people have either taken or smoked or in any way ingested and gotten in trouble with tainted drugs? And is that why you put it on the sign?
Yeah. So we, I did receive a call from the chief of police last week and yes, unfortunately, there has been increased number of overdoses and they are relating it to this tainted fentanyl and xylene.
All right. So by an increased number, it's a number of concern, I guess, that enough, but what does that mean to the general public?
We had five overdoses in one day.
Five overdoses in one day?
Yes.
Okay. And so when that happens?
Fortunately, they were all revived with Narcan.
Okay. Well, that's a very positive thing. And was it the same party or was it a different, all over the community?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Arthur.
Hi. My name's Arthur Schlossback. I live at 1043 Summerfield Avenue in Esberry Park. My family came here in 1888, opened up some real estate offices, they're now in Belmar. Before I get going for the Little League, our real estate agency for the last 90 years has given money to Little League. You take two of those little munchkins there and go knock on every real estate broker's door in this town, and there's a lot of them, because they've got 308 in like five things of sale, and have the city manager give you the names of the lawyers, accountants, engineers, anybody that does business with the city, they'll all write you a check, but you gotta go ask. Okay. I'm here because of what, I used to be on the now defunct Citizens on Patrol, the COP. We were in business for like eight years before they shut us down because of COVID. But now COVID's over and I can't get a response from Mike Casey, who was our sergeant, and the chief of police, because they just don't, we tried to get to talk with them, they wouldn't tell us why. We also had a car, it's gone. I'm sure the people that donated it to us didn't want it to be gone. And I just like, one of you was the police commissioner, right? Is it one of the council members?
No.
So I'm tuned to you to find out why and why we don't have it. I mean, the Citizens on Patrol is like, it's similar to a neighborhood watch, except it's a whole city. And we go out, we volunteer, we're the eyes and ears. In New Jersey, they don't let you, like, when I was on a auxiliary police officer in Manhattan, I was allowed to arrest people. They don't let you do here, but that's fine, you know? I guess in the eight years that I was driving around, we must have called in about 20 arrests. So that's, I just, and plus, it saves money. I mean, I've been on, with Obama, with every parade in town, we would work the parades, which means they didn't have to hire guys from Belmar, Bradley Beach and bring them in. I mean, I understand that maybe Casey and the chief don't live in Esberry Park, so they're not paying taxes here. But I am, any dollar I can get, not have to pay, because we probably save the city easily $10,000 a year, because you didn't have to have ones and twos going around every night when you had us out there. You can take one car down because we're out there. So if you could like try to find out why and let me know, we'll have them call me because I'd like, we already want to reinstate it. And we've never heard a bad thing about it and we've always, people, even I speak today, yesterday, Joe's at Forsizer, he goes, you guys going back out? The town liked it. And when the town likes the cops, it's not a bad thing. Thanks.
Thank you. And Rita's pre-Little League and the city manager, so she'll look into this and if you need any background, I can give you the background. It was an excellent program. And it's wrong that department heads don't return phone calls.
Sorry.
It's wrong that department heads or employees do not return phone calls.
All right. I will follow up with Sergeant Casey.
All right. I don't know if he's a rep now, but I'll know.
I will find out.
Motion to close.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Public participation is now closed.
Just one quick thing, Will, Celia, Dan, anybody, get us your schedule so when we do the Thursday blastouts, we can add that on it so more people may be attending. Maybe that's why, like Art said, there are some very generous people in this town and there are also some very cheap people in this town, but whatever we can do to get out the word, to help you like, and again, like, you know, the high school had their first win this year and I'm sure that's your kids moving up. So that was very much appreciated when they blew Lakewood away. So congratulations and we'll see what we can do. But if you guys set schedule.
I need to get a schedule.
Our blastouts go to like so many people, I'm sure some will attend, so again, thank you for all you do.
Thank you for all of it.
Okay.
Next, we're now on to the minutes of municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of April 24th. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
I am.
To abstain.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2024 to 28, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 29, resolution approving special events applications.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 30, resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for the 2024 budget.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 31, resolution authorizing the acquisition and installation of fencing needed at the Fourth Avenue and Hex Street playground utilizing Monmouth County Open Space Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 32, resolution authorizing the installation of an irrigation system at Lake and Grand Avenue to St. James Place.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 33, resolution authorizing the payment for roof replacement needed at City Hall, DPW and the Transportation Center.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 34, resolution authorizing the rental of a roller skating rink for the Esberry Park two-day roller rink festival project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 35, resolution amending a professional services contract with TNM Associates for remedial action services at the Fire Department Headquarters located at 100 Main Street.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 36, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the operation of seasonal concession to provide for the rental of umbrellas and beach chairs on the public beaches of Esberry Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 37, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the operation of a seasonal concession to provide private surf lessons to the public in a designated area of the Esberry Park beachfront.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Fred, we're gonna just make that small change.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 38, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Esberry Park to enter into a first amendment of the subsequent developer agreement with Esberry Partners LLC and PHM Sunset Square Urban Renewal LLC to extend the date for the governmental approvals and change the definition of the outside approvals date in connection with the development of property located at block 4205, lots two and three. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 39, resolution of the City of Asbury Park referring to the proposed amendment to the C B D redevelopment plan to the City of Asbury Park dated April 25th, 2024, in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing law, N J S A 40A:12A. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 40, resolution authorizing appointments to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority. The appointees are the Business Development Administrator Sylvia Silvi Chioffi and the Director of, and the, I'm sorry, yeah, the alternate is the Director of Community Development, Elton Armadi. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024 to 41, resolution accepting an agreement modification of a Safe Routes to School grant and associated design assistance from N J D O T and authorizing city authorities.
Move it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2024-17, bond ordinance providing for the Main Street, streetscape improvement project appropriating $900,000 thereof and authorizing the issuance of 707, $465,000 in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof, authorized in and by the City of Asbury and the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, with a public hearing date of May 22nd, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-18, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section 30-24 entitled Fees of Article III Development Administration and Enforcement of Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of May 22nd, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Yes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-19, ordinance amending ordinance 2024-8, which amended Chapter 7, Sections 13 and 14, to establish prohibited parking regulations along Emory Street and Second Avenue, with a public hearing date of May 22nd, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to second reading public hearings. Ordinance 2024-11, this is ordinance of the City of Asbury Park approving and adopting redevelopment plan for property located at 1201 Memorial Drive, block 203, lot 5. I understand there's a motion to table this.
Move to table.
Public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. So Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
To table. This is to table to the May 22nd, 2024 meeting. Yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-13, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park creating Article 13-1400 entitled Lead-Based Paint Inspections for Residential Rental dwellings of Part II Rental Property of Chapter 13, Property Improvement and Neighborhood Preservation, Property Maintenance Code of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. We'll have, is there a Director of Community Development here?
He's not here.
He's not here. Okay. Michelle, would you be able to step in? Thank you. Director of Planning and Redevelopment, Michelle Alonso, will provide a brief overview of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the public. This ordinance is to, this is a insertion of our Property Maintenance Code to, mandated by the state of New Jersey to deal with lead paint in homes constructed before 1978. This is heightened regulations of, for the abatement of lead and the, and that this ordinance requires inspections, also requires that the property owner, they would be the ones who would have to pay for the inspections. But this is on the heels of heightened requirements from the state of New Jersey.
Thanks, Michelle. May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on 2024-13?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing on ordinance 2024-13 is now open. Any member of the public who would like to speak, please use the microphone. Your comments may be regarding ordinance 2024-13 only.
Aubrey de Miranda, wait a minute. Could you explain that a little better? We're just simple people here. I didn't get what you said.
Well, actually, this is, what I skipped saying is this pertains to rental properties, and this is to protect children from lead poisoning, from lead paint, lead dust that would be in rental property.
Huh? Well, every house in Iberia is like property. They were sold as mine.
It's short-term rentals.
This is just for rental properties.
Short-term rentals.
Rental.
Rental. All rental.
Yes, this is all rents, I'm sorry.
So now they have to get one more inspection? Is that it?
It's state law.
Yes.
It's state law.
Oh, state law. Okay.
Carrie Butch, 5500 Dale Lake Drive. Can you guys kind of educate us on where we're at as a community? How many of our kids come out lead poisoned and things like that? Do we have numbers for that? Uh-oh. Go me to.
We have a question.
I just wanted to know if we're up on the numbers and if we're testing our kids and if we know how many of our kids may have come up too high with lead. In addition to doing this, I think this is a great thing for our community, and I think, you know, I commend everybody for getting this resolution together so quickly. But in addition, are we looking at, are we, are we doing anything to educate parents to blood test their kids? And do we know where our kids are?
Well, I was gonna say, I'm, I don't have those numbers personally, but we do have a lead program in the city that's run by a nonprofit who, I know the name, the name is going out of my head. They're well-known, it's, and that we contract our lead- They check our pipes, too. Don't forget, can we have somebody checking our pipes? What is the name of, what was the Hispanic Resource Center?
Community.
CARC.
C A R C is our entity that provides lead education and lead testing here in the city.
Okay. I appreciate that. Trenton is having a huge lead issue. They're testing parks and because of their long-term, I guess, ceramic factory kind of place, we may have some in Asbury Park also, so it'd be good to keep on top of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-13 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-13?
Move to adopt.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-14, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing Article 13-1300 entitled Short-Term Rentals of Part II Rental Property of Chapter 13, Property Improvement and Neighborhood Preservation, Property Maintenance Code of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Michelle, would you mind?
No, not at all.
For writing a brief overview.
Sorry. We know more about this than that. So, um, I, so we, as everyone knows, we recently did an update to the short-term rental ordinance where we tightened the proofs that your, that the residence is a principal residence in Asbury Park, you're only permitted to short-term rental if the residence is your principal residence. So we had upped the requirements, require more documentation. We had discovered in the implementation of this ordinance that one of the pieces of proof is not really obtainable by most people. It was something from the post office, that the post office had told us, they don't provide this to people on a regular basis. So we've changed the record with the postal service to a bank statement within the past three months as a heightened piece of proof that that is the principal residence. The other elements we put in last month remain the same.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-14?
Move to open.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-14, public hearing is now open. Any member of the public wishes to speak? Please use the microphone.
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-14 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-14?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-15, ordinance of the City of- Michelle, where are you going?
I thought the next one was about me. Wait, go.
I think it is. This was actually-
Special assessment.
15, ordinance. Thank you for your help. I appreciate it. Orderance 2024-15, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth and the State of New Jersey, providing for a special assessment of the cost of certain wastewater, stormwater, roadway, streetscape, utility, and other infrastructure improvements on block 4205, lots 2 and 3, within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area, establishing a mechanism for a payment of the cost thereof. Michelle, can you provide a brief overview of this ordinance?
Yes, so this is the special assessment, and the following is the financial agreement for the townhouse development that's proposed across from Sunset Lake, known as PHM Sunset Square. This, as, this is probably in the waterfront area, and it is a for-sale project, so the council is required to entertain the pilot and the special assessment that pays for the infrastructure in the waterfront area. So this is the part one or the part two of the financial agreement.
Thanks, Michelle. May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2024-15?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. Go ahead, Rita.
Aubrey de Miranda, wait a minute. What's the special assessment? What does that mean?
The special assessment is the fee that's levied on the homeowners that pays towards the bond for the infrastructure improvements in the waterfront area. We've done this for every redevelopment project in the waterfront since we adopted the, the special assessment ordinance about 12 years ago, roughly.
Could you explain that better? We're very simple people. We have to hear plain language.
Explain what the infrastructure-
Does that mean an increase in the people that live in the redevelopment area?
They pay, right, they pay an additional fee on top of- The homeowners. Right, the homeowners in the waterfront, all the condo owners in, all the buildings that have been built, whether it's the Vibe, the Grand, the Monroe, the 1101 Ocean, the, all the projects by K-Hub, not only do they pay a portion, their portion of the pilot, but on top of that, they pay an additional fee that's called a special assessment.
And it goes into doing the infrastructure around the buildings, the streets, the sewers, everything like that, the sidewalks, the trees, the bicycle racks, everything.
Well, how far does the redevelopment plan go?
How?
Up to Grand Avenue?
It only, it, so, no, yes and no. So only a portion of, the redevelopment boundary to the west only goes a small portion of Grand, basically where the K-Hub project from about eight years ago called the Grand is, but it's heck. It's actually, am I right? Yeah, because I'm tired, and to, to the water. So anyone, not, it doesn't, if you have an existing one and two-family home in the waterfront area, you do not get charged with the special assessment. It's for all new projects in the waterfront. So that's all the apartment buildings, all the townhouse condominium developments.
So all the ones that are getting an abatement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-15 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-15?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-16, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with PHM Sunset Square Urban Renewal LLC concerning property located at block 4205, lots 2 and 3, on a tax map of the City of Asbury Park and granting a tax exemption. Michelle, just explain this. Do you need this again, or are you? May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2024-16?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-16 is now open.
Okay. Could you tell us what lot and block? We don't know lot and block. What address is it?
Um, I'm gonna tell you where it, while I search for where exactly it is. It is the vacant parcel that fronts Kingsley, Sunset Avenue, next to the small apartment building across from Sunset Park on one side, across from Convention Hall on the other.
Is it next to, next to Kimmerer's?
It's next to Kimmerer's. Thank you, Fred.
The restaurant, Kimmerer's. It's a vacant lot that's right next to it.
Yeah, prime land. That's the prime lot. Are they getting an exemption, too?
They're getting a pilot.
A pilot.
Yeah. What's the, what's the difference between a pilot and an abatement, anyway?
Well, we casually use the term abatement incorrectly for these pilots. Pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes. It's not exactly an abatement from your taxes, because it's a different structure of payment. So when, but it casually, we call an abatement, so as you're referring to as abatement here tonight, it's a pilot.
How much?
I don't have that at the tips of my fingers. It is in this document. Eric had, or did an analysis for us, but I don't have that at the tips of my fingers. I have, I have the annual service charge will provide annual net revenue to the city of approximately $142,869.72.
That's removed?
No, 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 that's what we get a year.
Ah. So that's for how many units, again?
She's saying the document.
If he's gonna build there and out to the sidewalk?
It's townhomes.
Uh-huh.
It's 28 units in three-story stacked townhomes. So it's townhouse style, and we call them the two bays, meaning two sets of townhouses for a total of 28 units.
Two townhouses.
Two rows of townhouses.
Two rows?
Yes.
On that little lot?
It's, I, it's not that little.
Isn't that, I mean, like, he should be paying full taxes on that prime lot. That's one of the most prime lots in the city, on the corner of Sunset and Kingsley. Are you kidding me? And we're giving tax arrangements? I don't think so. Pilots?
Yeah. It's in the waterfront redevelopment.
And isn't the amount they're getting equivalent to conventional taxes?
Yeah, they're paying the city more than conventional taxes, and once again, our agreement with the master developer for the waterfront obligates us for every for-sale project to offer a pilot.
Well, I've been reading up on the pilots. They really no benefit to us, my good day off, but they're a bunch of land grabbers coming in and putting all these things on our property. What ever happened to the open air fund?
Okay, we're straying from the ordinance, so we gotta stick on this ordinance.
But in this prime land, it should be considered different pilot.
It was.
No.
It was considered as part of the waterfront redevelopment plan, and they, they met all the qualifications to receive what they're receiving. You may not like it, we may not like it, but so the law that was done in 2011 that were bound to it.
Oh, I don't know, maybe we should go to the planning board, maybe, because everything is getting screwed up with all these towns is coming up and all these, why do we need all that?
Okay. Motion to close?
Second.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Question? Just a short statement. I agree with Rita. From here on out, let's list addresses, because I lose track of block and lots, too. So Rita, see, you're not simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing on ordinance 2024-16 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-16?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. If anyone has anything else, we're on to adjournment.
Aye.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question? Just a short statement. I agree with Rita. From here on out, let's list addresses, because I lose track of block and lots, too. So Rita, see, you're not simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing on ordinance 2024-16 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-16?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. If anyone has anything else, we're on to adjournment.
Aye.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to use our adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.